There's a lot of issues coming out.
Okay, so it's been a lot of discussion, a lot of good information that's come out here tonight. So we know that they are being monitored. And apparently, for some odd reason, it's not catching in the monitoring devices. And that people around it are supposedly getting sick. I would be interested and hope that they bring documentation forward soon. Now you stated, what can we do at this point? I would suggest talking to him if you'd like me to go with you to talk to him about that six-foot fence. I don't think that's gonna be high enough. And I think that if he put up a high enough fence and the right tarp, that, you know, not to cover it, but like a fence, this one, kinda like what you see if you go down on St. Clair, or if you go down on 55th, you see some scrap facilities, you'll see this tarp, right? So what it does is it will provide an extra layer of barrier from smoke and soot coming out. And that, along with the monitoring system overhead, give, I believe, residents a level of comfort that, you know, that they need it because, you know, I mean, if they're testing it every week, and they've got systems over there in place, and they're not coming up with anything, sometimes when you see something, it might make you sick just looking at it. You may think that's just sick, right? So I think if you had that tarp, that fence covering it up so it wouldn't be such an isolation, I think that would go a long way in helping, helping with some of this.
Well, I think that could possibly help, yeah. Um, I talked with him, he says that he doesn't understand, it's not like he doesn't wanna come across as a creep. He's scared as well as far as the type of backlash that he's received, the personal attacks on him, things of that nature. So he's kind of reluctant to even engage at this point. So I'm trying to talk to him and say, "Look, you know, not everyone is out there to attack you, but you wouldn't want this in your backyard." And he finally admitted to himself, "I wouldn't want it, you know, I can understand." So making some kind of leeway, kind of trying to get more bees with honey and vinegar at this point. And so I just wanted to bring that up. I'm gonna take one more question, 'cause we gotta get to next agenda.
This is basically gonna help you in a long way anyway. There's a fiberglass shield that goes up, and it's a wall. It is a filter-type system where you, as he has the work capacity to rinse it down, it needs to be looked at toward, because beach, not beach, I'm sorry, Rattanoff is doing its own reduction of car emissions off the freeway going. It's a fiberglass wall, but it has to be removed every three years due to the structure of the metal that holds that in place.
So it reduces emissions?
It has to reduce emissions and smog and for backdrop into Rattanoff. Uh, and other recyclable plants, they do have those walls in place. If you go to 55th, you'll see it in place, but they have to be rinsed down on a day-to-day basis. And then every three years, they have to be removed. And each, uh, each concrete, not concrete, but each metal structure has to be replaced or painted so it doesn't cause any more problems.
Thank you for that suggestion, and it just made me think too, when Sexton, you were talking about the residents. Um, if anyone, I'm thinking about creating maybe a survey that we can pass out to the residents. Maybe they can answer questions, but whatever they, you know, whatever they're dealing with, and maybe we can take all of that and then try and restart the process again. So if anyone has any suggestions as far as where we can put on the survey, to ask the residents if there's any medical issues, you know, their way of life, what have you, um, contact me, maybe we can work on that together. But we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item, which is the Helen S. Brown Center. And I have Pastor Prove here. And, um, I just had my board meeting there, April 20th, it was nice. And we had a nice turnout. And I would like to bring him up, because he's done a lot of improvements to Helen S. Brown Center. To answer your question, that is still a city-built building. Um, there's a lease agreement that we have with his ministry. So, um, Mr. Holmes, so no, that's still within the city. That's, and so he's done a lot of work above and beyond his initial proposed budget. Um, he's here to talk about that, as far as, there was an issue as far as permits. We reconciled that issue. And we were able to take a tour of the facility, it looks really nice. And there's a lot of programs that he offers, so if you'd like to come up and just...
Thank you for the council's time. We are merciful of the ability to have some benefit to the city and cooperation with the city for the city. Trying to be of help. We had met, I believe we've met everything we were required to do in terms of permits. We incurred some expense to do that, but we understood we needed to do that, it cost us about eight hundred dollars. By the time the contractors got the licenses and permits, we paid for all of it so that that could be done. The last time we're here, I think we were around twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand dollars we had invested in the building. We still have some commitments to, um, this summer to establish, to install an additional unit in the building. We're receiving a donation to do that, so that the entire heating and air conditioning system will be replaced by the end of the summer. You guys know better than I know this kind of business. That's a very, very expensive issue to do, with insulation, the cost of the units. And so we've done all that, and what's important for the city, remember, these are permanent improvements. These are something that if we did not end up getting the building at some point, or being able to buy the building at some point, that's a permanent improvement that benefits the city. We've also, for some of you who came and seen our exercise dance room that we put together for the seniors, very nice, professionally done, everything is done at a professional level, that the seniors are able to come in and exercise and also go do dance programs, okay? Additional expense, we're ordering, we'll probably have it by next week, a new range. Uh, you know, there's a requirement to have an electrical, electric range, commercial range, about fifteen hundred dollars to buy. We have one, but that is probably in the next three weeks that'll be in the building. So that we're able to enhance our feeding program, we do feed the seniors now. We're really beginning to develop sort of relationship with the seniors in the building. At first, when we first came, they were curious, maybe kept it in their response to us, but we've kind of built a relationship. They're attending our services now, about fifteen, twenty of them are now attending our services. They found out that we're very sincere in what we're doing. Uh, we feed them every month. We've done it on a limited basis because we did not have a stove. So, you know, it's a little difficult thing, cooking food and transporting it there, but we got all of our churches to do that. We'll have the oven now in three weeks, so we'll be able to do it on an ongoing basis. And we're feeding the seniors, they're excited about that. We also intend, now that we've gotten most of our, now that we're out of the survival mode, you know, the first six, eight months of the building, we basically had to survive because we ran into massive, massive plumbing problem. They were very, very serious problems, to the point that for about six or seven months, we literally had service with no water. So can you imagine trying to keep your church in place and you pouring buckets in the toilet after people go and do the business? So that was real difficult. I had to preach real hard to keep people coming to church, but we managed to get that done. So that was a very severe issue for us, but we navigated through that and we got all that done. And we've done some aesthetic things too, but those, again, permanent things that remain. We put carpet almost through the whole building, that's a permanent improvement that will remain there for the future, regardless of what happens to the building. So we've tried our best to, and I understand, we have many East Cleveland people, we're not a big, large congregation. I travel a lot through the country, I've taken my honorariums, my wife was pastor. I've taken my travel honorariums and donated every single dime that I received to the improvement of that building. I don't wanna tell you what the number is, but it's been significant. We made a commitment to the city, people are excited about it, I think we're having some impact on the city. I have some of the documentation, I just came back from, I had a sudden run out of time because of a death. So I looked through my documentation, missing a few pieces, I'll be glad to get that for the city. So we just want to continue to work with the city. Uh, we want to start a senior care program, we're looking down the road to begin to transport seniors now that we've got a group that is coming through us the first of the month. We wanna start transporting seniors, you know, for tax, like going and cashing their checks, doing a little shopping, those kind of things. That's an outstanding, the board meetings. I'm glad those who came and saw the building, saw the investment that we put into the building, uh, so that it's an asset to the city. Uh, we're open to continue to work with the city and to be of benefit to the city. We just want the city to continue to work with us. Uh, and we're doing this not as a mega ministry, I hope, you know, all pastors wanna be a mega ministry. We're not, okay? We're doing this for about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty people, common, average, everyday people, that've got a hold of the vision and are selling it to it. So we have things before the council, we're asking the council to continue to work with us so that as we continue to put good faith in that building and demonstrate our concern for the city. We've worked with Councilman King and the feeding programs.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Not on a massive level. We've worked donating food, uh, we donate food locally every month. In addition to feeding the seniors, we also donate food. Every month we do that. We have an organization we've worked with, which is called The Love Truck, which gives donations to from restaurants and all across the city. And so we also, not only do we feed the seniors, we give our food. What we don't have, we take to local shelters every month. And this is just ramp up, because we've been in survival mode, basically trying to end the building. We're pretty much over the hump for the most part. It's functional, it's warm, it'll be cool in the summer. So we're just looking to see if they continue to work with us. If we are working with the city, I think we've demonstrated that our intentions are right and pure. We came here for the right reasons.
Yeah, we're gonna bring up the fact that because you have put so much money and invested into a building that is our city building, and that these are long-term, permanent updates.
Permanent improvements, right.
There's requests on your behalf to have some type of reprieve from the rent, the leasing, the lease agreement, and that's something that you've discussed at length with Brandon King. So at that point, Mr. ...
Thank Councilman King. Thank Chairman Brandon. So, yeah, you can see, so, again, you know, we kind of overlooked or misreached in not following procedure so far as the permits and whatnot. We got that all cleared up. So, council, know that was a concern, we got it all cleared up. Forgive us, we're only you, right? We got all the permits, he's got his occupancy permit now. Real quick, you got a question? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I had a question when you, uh, you're on the, uh, the committee.
Yes.
So, uh, and you presented, uh, this case. My concern is Pastor Prove, I respect all, uh, men of the cloth, or women of the cloth, which are very few. But my thing here is what, um, the, um, what the chair of the committee was saying before. When you jump to your new diligence, you fall and become a sacrificial lamb, if that's the proper word to say. And that means that the council, um, was in the mode where we were under the assumption, and we should never assume anything. You should ask questions, investigate, and find out what's going on. The only time that we found out that the permits that were supposed to be, have been taken care of by your, um, congregation, or you, or whatever, the head.
Contractors. Contractors doing the work.
Don't worry, don't worry, it's not my fault. Whatever was the business that was supposed to have been taken by the congregation, the head of the church, or whatever, did not take place. That meant that when I started answering questions, at that point, I found out there were no permits. And, and let's get real with it. I know how, uh, our folks are. They donate in-kind services, they be helpful, they volunteer. So what they probably did with you is say, "Pastor, I can do this, I can do this kind of work, I da-da-da." So you didn't get the permits you were supposed to have got. That, um, kinda threw me for a loop, because I didn't understand why we didn't have the, what was legal. And you were working with a contractor and one of our council members. So now, the only thing that I can add, Councilwoman, uh, Joey Graham, and I had to say the whole thing, because I was very, is, do we have, and I don't want nobody telling me nothing, I want to see, and will I be able to see all the permits that has been done? Because you had, you were in the occupancy anyway. So, uh, I want to be able to see what is going on and the clearness of what has taken place. It has nothing to do with your religion, whether you're a good preacher, bad preacher, or what. Anybody that comes into the city and provides a service that is genuinely transparent, I admire, because you're doing something for the city. But I just want to see your permits. I wanna make sure that everything is where it's supposed to be. You had to stop what you're doing and clear everything out in order to get this done. And that could have been done upfront, had we all been aware that there were no permits. And that's all I got to say.
Okay, good, good comments, if I could take it, please, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just gonna say that those, that's some council's office, and it's been in council's office for...
A number of weeks.
Well, they haven't been told to the council.
We actually sat down...
We haven't brought it up, it hasn't come up, but it has been in council's office.
We actually, we actually sat down with the building and housing in Bumbayla to go over what was needed post, in fact, and, you know, we apologize to him, Mr. Leach, for our negligence, uh, all the way around, and not pulling the work permits. And even the contractors not pulling the work permits, right? So once we got past all of that, documentation was provided, all of the work permits have been accounted for and paid for, and copies of them are in the council's office. And there's also a copy of his business occupancy permit in the council's office. So now that we have all of the permits taken out, paid for, and the occupancy, I have taken the liberty to draw up the addendum to the lease. Well, the reason I drew it up is because, many of you will remember, I drew up the original lease.
And you weren't supposed to.
I drew up the original lease, and I drew up the First Amendment to the lease. Now, the way this works, so that everyone in here knows and is comfortable, is just writing on a piece of paper. It's not official until I give it to the law director. And the law director says, "Yea, this, nay, this," it passes. So this is not an official document until the law director says it's an official document. So rest assured, it will go through the proper channels before it becomes a legal document. So I just, I just wanted to turn this over and to her, so you can see where the dates will go in, if we're ready to move this forward.
Yeah, I need a vote from the council.
No, I'm not ready to go forward with something I haven't seen.
So it would still, it would still need to, if I'm not mistaken, a law of record, it would still need to go in front of council and be voted on?
Well, just reviewed by, and it could be by consensus, once everyone reviews it, and then I review it for legal point.
So I'm starting to be on a legislative...
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give these to, unless you guys, I can give you guys copies of it from the council.
Well, that would be right. Give them, give them copies, and then even at agenda review Thursday, you know, I can come up and see them. Make sure that each of the council people are aware of what you're...
Yeah, that's no problem, that's no problem. And again, it's not a legal document too, you said, so...
Well, it has to be substantively approved, I just approve it for four minutes, for four minutes.
I'm still saying, you cannot, and I'm making it very plain, Vice President, you cannot draw up a lease or anything of that kind. That has to be turned over to the, uh, the law director.
So, so, wait a minute, timeout. Who told you that? You said that I can't draw it?
Wait a minute, what I mean, I'm still talking.
And I'm talking over you. Who said that I can't do that?
Don't talk over me.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Don't talk over me, I'm not one of them out there.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Why are you saying that?
I'm saying that because, I am saying that because this had come up once before. And the previous, I don't know what Director Hemmings is saying, but Mr. Riley said it was not, uh, legal for you to do that, being a councilperson. And he is a, uh, not a resident, but we're doing business with him.
Mr. Riley never told me anything like that.
I said he told me.
This must have been a different situation.
I, I was talking about Mr. Prove.
It couldn't have been underproof, because Riley wasn't here.
I was talking about, and I, and I asked, wait a minute, first of all, I asked, and there's information in your, in your, uh, charter that says that you, it would look like collusion.
How does it look like collusion?
It looked like collusion, because you're trying to draw up a lease for somebody that didn't have permits, and now you're coming back and then saying, "Forgive me, because we didn't do this and we didn't do that." He is supposed to work, have worked with the, uh, community development individual and got all this done. When I talked to Mr. Leach, Mr. Leach didn't even know he was in Helen S. Brown. Mr. Bumbayla didn't know he was in Helen S. Brown. So Mr., the engineer himself could not authenticate the fact of anything that was going wrong. Because the council vice president, who is a contractor, didn't, I guess, inform Mr. Prove, uh, Pastor Prove, what the things were supposed, what was supposed to happen. Now, I'm not finished. I'm not finished. And then a contractor, who's doing business, who's doing business, is supposed to know that they need to pull permits. That's what's supposed to...
Now, when you were president of council, Pastor Prove was in Helen S. Brown Center, correct? Helen?
Yes, he was.
When Pastor Prove, when Pastor Prove first occupied Helen S. Brown Center, you were council president?
Yes.
Okay, so any common knowledge about permits would have been shared amongst council? Not having permits, lack thereof, or having...
And again, he was working with, he was working with Mr. King.
So we, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna rehash, I understand where you're coming from. If it's a transparency issue, if we wanna have the lease written, maybe we can have the law director do it.
That's right.
And I have no problem with that. And if that's your issue, then that, and that's, and that's, and that's a valid issue.
That's it.
Now, not to say that no one knew that he was in this building, I think that was...
I said no authoritative person knew he was in the building. That means Mr. Bumbayla, that's the engineer, the director of community development, that's Mr. Leach, and then even, wait a minute, and even the law director, I brought her down, and she said that it was not...
So that's just council and the administration not communicating?
That's right.
Okay. And so when he was officially put in, when he was officially first put in back in the summer, I remember distinctly sitting on that side of here and council voting regarding Pastor Prove and opening him, having that building. So I'm trying to figure out how this is, but if that's your only issue, then we can rectify it. There's no problem with that, in the name of transparency, neutrality, to make sure our... So there's no problem with that, that's, there's no problem with that.
That's all I'm at.
Yeah, we've already, that's no problem, we can do that, we can figure out a way to do that.
Please, please, I want, if, if, let me jump in, let me...
Hold on, Mark, I'm sorry. Yeah, because you can't let him down, so I do, I'll need him, okay?
No, you don't have to leave that still.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just heard.
Maybe that's why he didn't get the permits, because he couldn't tell the difference.
I need to say, I need to say this, because I think it's important. Helen S. Brown was sitting near a vacant facility, rotting like most buildings that begin, water leaking and pipes busting and all that. Pastor Prove, no one on this council was against you having a church and doing something positive. The government is brought processing procedure, there must be followed, it's the law. If Brandon enters season a situation to do leases, it's, it looks like it's steering to something. It just looks that, I'm not accusing him of that, okay? I know from being at your facility two or three times, that you, you're investing a whole lot of money there. You're doing what you can. And I, and I always operate from a point of view of common sense. If you hadn't done that, and I'll be fair about this, this facility would be probably there rotten. Nobody's gonna step up to do it. So what I'm asking us to do, as a wise collective body, that we work out the kinks in this, come together, you, you chair contracts and partners, okay? You chair this committee, and see where we can reach some common, I think, common ground. You, if I were you, you're on a lease issue right now. How long is that lease for now?
One year.
One-year lease. And with the money that you're investing in, and you, you probably wanna eventually own the facility. That's an assumption of mine, and Brother King said I shouldn't assume anything, but that's an assumption. So, so then we, because you, you're a man of God, okay? And, and I've spoken with you, and I was at your meeting, what, a week ago? Okay, Wednesday. And I, and I can see what you've done and what you're doing. So I want you to have the perception that anyone up here should know, it's just questions of process and procedure that come up all the time. And we have to be on top of that kind of thing, or we get in trouble. We, we want on top of that with the ARCO thing, and we look like fools, okay? So, uh, what I'm requesting is that we, whatever little kinks that we need to work out, just work it out. I want you to be upfront about your, your plans, if you wanna eventually buy the facility, whatever the case may be, or whatever, you putting all this money in it, whatever. We need to know that, so that we can move forward honestly, okay? That's all I would just say.
I wanna say this to the council, okay? We did what we knew. We had no intention, and I understand process and procedure, I wasn't used to it for a long time. And ignorant in the law, you know, doesn't, not pass it, I'm not saying. So we ask you to give us in that we didn't know. They've worked with us, you know, we have been overeager to do anything we knew to do. Again, I'm gonna say this, we're a small congregation, we have people have given massively to do this. It was not, it was not an easy thing to convince my congregation. I have East Cleveland people, okay? My people don't live in East Cleveland, okay? And it was not an easy thing to convince my people to say, "Listen, we need to move, and the pastor's vision is we wanna stay in East Cleveland." There are some people who say, "Let's be real with each other." Some people say, "Well, why, Pastor, should we do that?" Because I said, "We have a vision, so that we don't just preach, feed, and take care of people." And my people are all in. And all in to the extent that we understand that you can't be all in without meeting the rules. And so we've made up a rule that we understood to me. When we found that we were in violation, we did all diligence and paid what even the contractors should have paid, we paid it for them, so that it would be done quickly. That some of the contractors possibly was, "Hey, I got my money, what the heck." We paid their fees to demonstrate our desire to use the right way. So we asked the council to, whatever sins we've committed, please forgive us. You have that grace to do that, okay? Within this realm, all right? Forgive us what we've done wrong. No intention to do wrong, we wanna go forward. I don't wanna go back and give a bad report to my congregation, that's not a good thing. I don't want them to be nervous, "Pastor, did you lead us like Moses to someplace now? We wish that you didn't lead us." We wanna go forward and keep building and helping the community. We're getting momentum, uh, we're getting our feet, and people will begin to believe that we are there for... And people will begin to believe that we are there for the right reason. To work with us, we'll do whatever you tell us to do. Just tell us what to do. You know, we're not in this arena. I don't know this arena. I know the Bible, I know business, I don't know government. I've never contracted before. We obey whatever you tell us to do. What, what do we need to do, we'll do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Am I able to acknowledge Councilwoman Grant? Okay, as, excuse me, Mr. Holmes, I think I have it for... Okay, thank you. Without sounding like Pharaoh, what we need to do is just, someone send me an email that you want to amend the legislation that set the lease agreement. And I'll create an amendment, a new resolution so that this can be amended and then I think ARCO procedure will be met. So if you send me that, it's a...
But you can do that because, because that has the terms on it.
We'll get that, we'll, we'll send it to you.
Those are the chair of the committee.
Okay, so then what we'll do is, well...
A request for legislation will be made. I'll make new legislation and council will vote. Without sounding like Pharaoh. I don't know about Pharaoh.
One thing I like is, how can you occupy a building, work in the building, live in the building, and doing what you have in the building without the permit, permit, when the building is not finished?
How the Teriyaki Express operate all those, all those weeks without any kind of, uh, it's, Teriyaki Express, the new restaurant in Ward Two, how can it operate with any type of health permit?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on. You could speed up and down the street as long as you don't get caught.
Exactly.
But if you get caught, you have to pay the penalty. See, y'all showing me where you all have no business, knowledge of doing things properly. This is the same way you did with ARCO. You're doing the same thing here, you're doing the same thing down there. You say, I don't know. See, I'm not doing the business properly. If you start a line off straight, you have no problem. But if you start off crooked, you're never always gonna have problems.
It's the purpose of committee so we can just step forward a bit.
Y'all should have done this upfront. You're always gonna do it after it's done, in the done run.
You know, the issues here with Helen S. Brown, as well as ARCO for me specifically, a lot of these...
I don't say, okay, I know...
But I'm, but I'm up here with them, so I'm not gonna try and separate myself. But I'm saying that this is a good process for us, as, as well as the residents, to hear everything out, see and know all, so we can get it out, where you get the keys out during the committee. So when we, so when we go to the council meeting, it's because of business.
That's getting upfront.
It's something you would probably have to ask every individual member, but I don't think there's anything wrong with...